Call the meeting to order. All rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. All council members are present. We all have the agenda in front of you. Is there any changes?
I have eight unfinished business which is missing. It's a report from Keith Yap on the project.
Okay. Number eight unfinished business. Report from Keith Yap. Are there any other changes? Not, do I have a motion to approve the agenda with that addition?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Heidi, second by Dave. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Five in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes, July 1st, 2015, regular meeting. Is there any changes, corrections, clarification? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the minute?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Dave.
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Any last minute things? Hearing none, call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Now's the time where for our public open forum, is there anyone here that would like to address the council? Is there anyone here that would like to address the council? Third, last time, is there anyone here that would like to address the council? Seeing none, our public open forum is now closed. We have no public hearings. With that, we will move on to our reports of presentations. Police Department, Brian?
Evening, Mayor and Council. Okay, activity report for the month of June 2015, some of the numbers we had. We had ten alarm calls. We had three K-9 assists for other agencies. We had twenty-nine assists for other agencies. We had thirty-four citizen contacts. We had one arrest for a second degree controlled substance cocaine. We had nine dog complaints, five of those for running at large, two barking, two others. Fifteen driving uncanceled or revocated or suspended license. Four small amounts of marijuana or paraphernalia arrests. We had twenty-one medicals, eleven accidents, twenty-three suspicious calls, seven thefts. We gave out three hundred and thirty-five verbal warnings. We had eleven welfare checks. So we had a total of six hundred and ninety-three for total activity for the month. Comparing that to May, we're up on calls thirty-five and gave sixty-one more warnings and a total up ninety-six. Compared to 2014, pretty similar numbers. So, otherwise, that's all I have. The K-9 squad was delivered the next day after our last meeting and some of the equipment has taken two to three weeks to get put in it, so that's kind of the holdup. But meanwhile, they're detailing it and putting the, you know, logos on it and so getting some of the equipment, put in the lightings and stuff. So, I was hoping to have it by this weekend, but I don't think it's going to happen, so...
So, we're looking at probably another two weeks?
Yeah, another week for sure.
Okay.
Yeah, hopefully by the fair.
All right. And I take it you got everything, everything is covered and ready to go for Sinclair Lewis Days this weekend?
Yep, I think we should be set for it, yep.
Okay.
Parade route looks good and I think all the Sunday events should be in order, so it should be good, starting off tonight with the kiddie parade, I think, so.
Right. Okay. Any questions for Brian?
Just the citizen contact, what does that all involve, Brian?
Citizen, anytime we make contact, that could be anything from stopping an individual walking down the street that looks suspicious to us, inquiring about it, to stopping and talking to kids playing on the, in the basketball court and maybe stopping them playing with, you know, shooting baskets or with them. So, it's a long range, it's, try to, in the summertime, we try to get out there and visit more people that we see, get out of the squad car and be more personal with people and so, and then I tell them to log that on their thing, so...
So, it's a good thing as much as it is a...
Right, exactly.
Good.
Yep.
I also appreciate too, just having young kids that ride bike. My kids want to wear their helmets now because of the Dairy Queen coupons that you guys are giving out.
Yep.
Talking to other cities that they've never heard of that, so I think that's...
Oh, yeah, we have a lot of those to give out, so, yep, we'll keep giving them out.
Good.
All they gotta do is keep wearing their helmets.
Okay, good.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Planning Commission report?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In your packet, you have a copy of our agenda. We just held our meeting yesterday, a very nice, short meeting. We had a public hearing to amend some of the zoning, section 156.047 and .048, and that will be an action item later on your agenda. Then you have a copy of the April, May, and June monthly building reports. And then there was also information items, a lot of educational opportunities for our Planning Commission members to attend, if they'd like.
Okay, any questions? Diane, have anything you want to add?
No, I think one of the zoning things that we did was more for like daycare and that, and we just wanted to bring it up to snuff with the state, so that we're on the same playing, playing field.
And there was one, also, an request to waive from the fire zone requirements, which can be waived at the Planning Commission level, and that also, I believe, is on there for council approval too, I believe.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Park Board report?
Okay, the Park Board met in regular session on Tuesday, July 7th. I have some bullet points of the highlights. They received the campground report. Our rentals are up on the campground. We were busy every weekend and, we were booked solid every weekend in July, except there was a few open sites last weekend. On splash pad update, the concrete, the concrete is in and the splash pad, it's been out there, all the structures are up and they're on there. We are waiting for a part, a UV sanitizer, to come so that they can finish up inside the building. We're getting estimates on, or we're getting the concrete contractors now for the sidewalk. And then we'll be doing the, getting all the final grade put back to where it is and getting the rain garden excavated, and then we'll be working on that. So, the State Department of Health has to come and do an inspection. We've asked him to stop by when he's on other inspections to make sure we're going right before we have our formal, final inspection. So, there's some things to be done yet. As soon as they get that UV sanitizers installed, we will be hopefully turning it on and making sure everything works before we have our inspection. So, things are going well. If you've been out there, you can kind of see the color choices now that we made and the different pieces. I think all the pieces are there and installed, except for the actuators that they hit to actually start each of the units. Those are actually on the ground right now. They'll be raised up on pedestals. And then there is a shower and a drinking fountain that's being installed out there too. So, those will be new things that'll be added to the pad. Yet, the shower is actually off the pad, it's kind of along the sidewalk, so, but you kind of have a good idea now what it's going to look like, so. We've had some very positive comments about it. People are getting restless, we're waiting to get it done. I just want to thank everybody for their patience, you know, two-thirds of what you, of what's going into this pad, you can't see, it's under the ground or it's in a building. So, it appears that there's work not being done and yet there's, there's work happening, so, we keep moving forward. They also had, the Park Board has a recommendation on the dock, the public access dock, they make a recommendation on that. We will be having a youth hockey arena dance on October 3rd, 2015, while they'll be renting the arena again and having that fundraiser. They begin the discussion on options for relocation of the Fish Cleaning House, and that's something that they're talking about, and there'll be some future reports on that. And also, they received a report on the Tower View Ball Field improvements. The Baseball Association's been making some improvements to the ball fields up there, so. We have one action item tonight, and that is the public access dock.
Questions?
That, that drinking fountain, that's not going to be hooked up to the recycled water?
It has its very own line of fresh water.
Yeah, it's real clean. Do we have a date we expect to have the splash pad operational?
We don't have a date set yet. It's really going to be dependent on when the Department of Health, they have one guy that goes around the state and inspects these.
All right, we need to get an inspection first.
Yeah, and we have to get that inspection. If we pass it the first time, that's good, but we're, this is a pretty big splash pad compared to the other ones that they're doing, except for in the larger cities, so, we'll let you know as soon as he's scheduled for his formal inspection.
One of the things that I had thought of with the splash pad, are we having like fake grass around the outside edge of that? So, basically, if they step off the edge, they don't turn into a mud-throwing contest or...
The way it's set up, and if you've been down there, the, the concrete colored area is the wet area, and that all drains to the drains.
Okay.
The green area is the dry area, and if it gets wet, it drains out to the outside. But that is actually a, a dry area where the water is not spraying on that area, so that is our buffer. We'll have grass up to that, except toward the shelter, where we have the sidewalks, we're looking at having pavers and things, so where that traffic area is, we will not have grass.
Okay.
There's, other cities have tried other things around the outside of their perimeter, but they've said that if you have your traffic area, something different outside the edges of the pad, on the backsides, haven't been too much of a problem. I'm not saying it won't be and that we might not have to address that in the future.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Airport report?
The airport board met on Wednesday, July 8th. They have some warranty work on the new pump at the fueling station that was supposed to be done this week. I've heard this morning the part's not in yet from Wayne Pump, and so we're still waiting on that. The runway lights have, we've done some repairs out on the runway lights, and we are doing our SWIP testing. That's a quarterly test that we have to have for, that's our industrial stormwater permit. There's some items from our inspection to be corrected, which, these are ongoing items, which is farming too close to the runway, there's a too close farm road, we have to have a wild animal count, we have a tree height issue with a couple trees, and then, of course, we have badger, gopher, and coyote holes that we need to get out there and get filled. So, these are kind of ongoing maintenance items. There is the fly-in, that is Sunday, July 19th, from eight to one, and that is the breakfast out there at, there's breakfast out at the airport, and the chamber is putting that, putting that on. And you also will have airplane rides, if anybody that wants to go out there with a donation. They are, have a recommend, recommend appointment to the board position vacated by Tom Johnson, that is your action item tonight. And we are working to formalize an airspace easement over DNR property. Many, many years ago, the city had forty acres there by the airport that we deeded over to the DNR with the expectation we would retain an airspace easement over it. Somehow, back then, it wasn't properly formalized, and so we're working to do that with the DNR. But they have one action item, and that is action item 7B.
Okay, any questions?
Just one on that. Are we, you, is it anticipated we will have that pump fixed before the Oshkosh?
That is the, the Oshkosh is the 19th, that's starting, starting that week, and so we have let the company know, both the warranty company, Wayne, and Zal, who we purchased it from, that we, that's our expectation, and our engineer, consultant for the airport, is emailing him every day, like twice a day.
Okay.
So...
I know that was a concern at the meeting, because you do have some people that stop by, fuel up on their way there.
It is our biggest sale week of the year for fuel at the airport.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you. Moving on, action items, approval of the 2015 abatement prop, payment.
As you know, the city previously entered into a contract with Dunham Express, their legal name is eighty-three-ten Properties, to abate the city share of property taxes. It was for fifteen years as an incentive to locate in Sock Center. The payment is made to Dunham on a semi, semi-annual basis, so the amount due now semi-annually is twenty-two-seventy-seven-nineteen. And so I'm requesting approval of that abatement payment to Dunham Express.
Okay, questions, concerns? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the abatement payment to Dunham Express? So, I have a motion by Keith, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Any other comments? Ask the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Appointment to the airport board?
With the retirement of Tom Johnson, we have a vacant position on the airport board. The city code states, one member of the board shall be a public works representative. The airport board recommends that Matt Zinnio fill that position, so that is our requested action, to appoint Matt Zinnio to the airport board vacant position.
Okay, any comments or questions? If not, I'll be looking for a motion to appoint Matt Zinnio to the airport, airport board position.
Motion to appoint Matt.
I have a motion by Dave, do I have a second?
A second?
No.
Second by Heidi. Any other questions, concerns? Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Approved resolution 2015-43, purchasing dock system.
The Park Board reviewed options for the replacement of the dock at the public access in Sinclair Lewis Park. In 2015, we budgeted seventy-five-hundred for a dock replacement. The Conservation Club has actually donated a thousand dollars toward the purchase. We did receive three different bids from three different companies, so we have two from Mincor, one for forty feet and one for sixty feet, two from Channel Marine, one at forty and one at sixty, and then Stubbs Marine for sixty feet. The Park Board recommends that we purchase the six-by-forty from Mincor. This is the same type of dock used by the DNR at its public accesses. So, that price for that six-by-forty is six-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars and fifty cents, and that is the dock that the Park Board is recommending that the city purchase, and that's in resolution 2015-43.
Okay, questions, concerns?
Was there a, was there any thought given to a sixty-foot dock, or...
They did discuss a sixty-foot dock as well, and they went with the forty because the reason for the length of the dock has to do with depth, and, you know, we have the ability to excavate out to whenever it infills, so we recommended forty feet, and so that's where we're going with.
Okay. I think one of the things too is if you did go with the sixty-foot dock, if you would go with the Stubbs Marine, it'd be over what we had budgeted even with the thousand dollars from Conservation Club. So, I would see that as one of the concerns.
Yep.
So, any other questions or comments? I'll be looking for a motion to approve resolution 2015-43, purchasing dock system for public access, which would be the Mincor aluminum wood deck, six foot by forty.
Motion.
Motion by Heidi.
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Any other comments? Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Approved resolution 2015-44 and 2015-45, authorizing minor subdivision.
Ryan West has submitted an application for a minor subdivision of park property adjacent to his home at 743 Hickman Drive. The current fee owner of the parcel is John W. and Joanne S. Meyer. The proposal is to purchase segments of adjoining property and combine them with his home property resulting in a larger parcel. I do have the certificate of survey that's attached, the purchases for part of Outlet B and part of Outlet C. I do have to have one separate resolution for each outlet because one of the parcels is owned by John W. Meyer and one by John W. and Joanne S. Meyer, and the county requires a separate resolution if the name isn't exactly the same. The resulting parcel will comply with all city codes and restrictions, and as you know, the city code allows this type of the subdivision when it's going to be recombined, and it meets all our codes and restrictions, just to come straight to city council for approval. So, I do have it on your action item to approve resolution 44 and 45, approving the minor subdivisions.
Okay, any questions, comments? I don't see any concerns. I don't know, did Planning Commission have anything?
None.
None?
None.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll be looking for a motion to approve resolutions 2015-44 and 2015-45, approving the minor subdivisions.
Motion to approve both.
We have a motion from Dave, do I have a second?
A second, both.
Second for Heidi, for both resolutions. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Except Fire Department Standard Operating Guidelines.
The Fire Department has been working to update its bylaws, you know, in the old days, we called them bylaws, but they're really not a legal entity under themselves, so they're standard operating guidelines. And the types of things that they changed in the, in these guidelines, where they removed all the reference to bylaws and called them guidelines. They removed all the treasure duties. The Fire Department does not handle its own money, that is handled by the city administration, and so those duties were removed. They added into it that appointment to the Fire Department is by the city council, because only the city council can appoint or remove firefighters, they are considered employees. It, officers' duties were defined as far as what their expectations are, and they also evaluated, or updated their evaluation tests toward the end. So, the Fire Department membership has received the updates, and they are recommending its adoption. So, what the city council needs to do then is to approve those guidelines for the Sock Center Fire Department.
I have one. I know the physical examination, evaluation tests, that's part of the candidates to get considered, to be, they have to pass to be considered to get on the Fire Department?
Yes.
The ones that are on the Fire Department, how often do they have to maintain, are they gonna, or don't they ever get tested again?
I know they get tested again, I can't answer how often that occurs.
Okay, that was one of the questions, I was just wondering.
I can find out, I'll find out for you.
Okay, any other questions? If not, do I have a motion to approve the standard operating guidelines for the Sock Center Fire Department?
So moved.
Motion by Diane, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any other comments, questions?
Vicki, how often do these policies get reviewed?
The, the department reviews them periodically, but this was a big change. They hadn't actually updated their bylaws for about fifteen years, so...
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, I'll be looking for most, oh, we already did that.
Who was it?
Diane made the motion, Dave seconded it.
Okay.
Any other comments? Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Approved ordinance 760, amending city code.
The Planning Commission at its meeting last night, they recommended updates to the city code to, like as Diane stated earlier, to be more compliant with the state guidelines. The first item here, item number one, is how we define a family daycare. We currently define it as fourteen or fewer in the home. The state has divided that into two categories. You have family daycare, which is ten or less, and then you have group family, or childcare, I should say, you have family childcare, which is ten or less, and group family childcare, which is fourteen or less. So, basically, it took our daycare in the home, in a residence, and divided into two categories. In addition to the family daycare, which is within a private residence, you also have your, we had group daycare slash nursery school, which is now called a daycare center, and that is how they refer to that, so we have changed our definition, name, to be, or childcare center, I should say. In Sock Center, those childcare centers are conditional use permit versus a permitted use when they exceed twelve persons, and it's been requested this be updated to switch over to a conditional use when it hits fourteen persons. This would be, so if someone had a in-home family childcare of fourteen and they wanted to go to a daycare or group, or a nursery school, or a group fam, I'm sorry, childcare center, I'm getting my names all mixed up. So, I have it in my home and I have fourteen, I want to have a childcare center, I want to take those four, same fourteen kids to start out, and so in our zoning, it would be a permitted use. So, that is really all we're doing, is we're updating those, and we're switching, adding two more children to when they actually require a conditional use versus a permitted use. Sorry about that, I got a little tongue tied there for a moment. So, what this ordinance does is amends our code, amends those definitions relating to childcare uses, it updates the zoning chart to change it from twelve to fourteen when you would be required for a conditional use permit for a childcare center.
Do we have any daycares that would, are going to be affected by this, or are they grandfathered in?
It wouldn't change anything for anybody that we have right now in town.
Okay.
This is actually less restrictive.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Okay, do I have a motion to approve ordinance 760, amending city code, amending definitions relating to childcare uses and updating zoning charts? So, I have a motion by Keith, do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Heidi. Any other questions, comments? Not, call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Unfinished business, report by Keith Yap.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Supposed to keep this quick, Vicki said, so, everything's going pretty well, all the pipe is, almost all the pipe is in the ground on the Belt Line project west of Main Streets. They're just making that final tie-in on the north end of Getty Street. The jacking started today, went rip-roaring great for twelve feet, and then they hit a rock, so, they're working with getting that rock out of there so they can continue on, so hopefully that won't take too long to get acrossed. And they'll be starting kind of some work on the, actually on Center Street, they'll be bouncing around pipework-wise, just kind of finding places that they can work and whatnot, so they'll be bouncing around. And the earthwork portions are working on the streets, when they run out of spots, they'll start working on some of the ponds, so that's going to kind of bounce around a little bit as well. But things are going real good so far, so, any questions?
I just had one question brought up by the Retired Educators Association, they'll have the schoolhouse open this weekend for Sinclair Lewis Days. They are able to use that, the, what was a one-way before, correct?
Yep, they'll be able to come in from the south and get into the parking lot and go back out the same way.
Okay.
Any other questions? It's nice to see moving along there for a long time, everybody was thinking that was going to get drawn out a lot longer than what it was because there was no action, but...
Yeah, it's, it's moving along now, so it's little by little gets, gets going, so, but we'll see a lot. We're actually going to change a detour just a little bit when we start working on Center Street, they're going to open up portions of Belt Line, so it'll be a, a little bit of a change so that people can get around on 12th and come through there, so that'll occur probably starting next week.
Still thinking beginning of September for a finish date?
It's supposed to be, yeah, so, they're generally on schedule, so it should, they just got to keep, keep chugging along.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks, Keith.
Thank you.
We have no new business, which should take us into the consent agenda. We have the schedule of claims, unpaid claims of two-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and twenty-four cents, paid claims of twenty-eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars and sixty-six cents, for a total of two-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars and ninety cents. And June checks totaling two-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-nine dollars and seventy-one cents. We also have a donation from the Men's Card Playing Group, which is resolution number 2015-46, accepting that contribution of two-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars to be allocated to the senior center. I want to thank the card playing group for that donation. We also have a gambling application for exempt permit requests from Eagles Healing Nest for a raffle and bingo on August 29th, 2015, at Eagles Healing Nest. for a raffle and bingo on August 29th, 2015, at Eagles Healing Nest. Also a gambling application for exempt permit requests from Pumpkins and Monkeys Preschool for a raffle on October 25th, 2015, at American Legion Post 67. Is there any questions, concerns, or comments about the consent agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
We have a motion by Diane.
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Any other questions? Call a question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Takes us into the informational items, demographics, population, and housing. As you can see, 2014 estimate of Sock Center's population is four-thousand-four-hundred-and-six, which is about up a hundred from what the sign says.
Well, the sign is about three years old, so...
Okay.
We're getting new updates.
Okay.
We're getting a new sign.
All right, any questions about that?
Well, there's just one, as far as street repairs, you have to reach that for any state assistance, you have to reach five thousand, is that correct?
Kind of.
Okay.
You're talking about state aid for streets, if you hit a five thousand population?
Yeah.
That then you would receive state aid. Well, this year, in the bonding bill and in the tax bill, they passed a provision for smaller cities to potentially receive a piece of the pie. So I haven't received the official notification, but our estimate is that we should receive from that fifty-three-thousand dollars a year towards street maintenance. So, we were gonna talk about that in the budget cycle, but now's as good a time as any, so...
Good work.
Thank you.
All right, with that, that ends our agenda items, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion by Dave.
A second.
Second by Heidi. Call a question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Meeting adjourned.